This meeting come to order today is Tuesday, May 23rd, 2017. This is a study session of the Prescott City Council. Roll call, please.
Mayor Oberg.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Blamerson.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman LaZell.
Here.
Councilwoman Orr.
Here.
Councilman Shiska.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
Okay, we have two items today, and I'll open it up to the floor if there's any public comment. Thank you for coming today, and we'll just start it with 3A. You want to go ahead and read 3A, Rhonda?
Recap of 53rd legislator. Presented by Barry Aaron. Sorry.
3A, I thought you meant 2A, because my name is A-A-R-O-N-S. Got confused, so I apologize.
I apologize.
Preempting, Clark, I apologize. Thank you, Mayor Oberg, Mayor Pro Tem Blamerson, members of the council. It's nice to be back up here today, since yesterday it went back up to 100 degrees in Phoenix. It's always nice to come. You can invite me up here to present before you anytime during the summer that you want, and I'll be happy to do it. I wanted to give you an overview of the 2017 regular session, which officially concluded, really, last night at 5:00, because that was the deadline that the governor had for signing or vetoing all the bills. So, we're done now, and the effective date of all legislation that was passed will be August the 8th, except for those that passed by unanimous, I'm sorry, by emergency measure. I wanted to thank the city manager and Tyler for their help during the session. It was great. I want to thank Mayor Oberg for coming down there at my request a couple of times when I needed to have some heavy artillery down there on issues that I know you were very concerned about. I've got here a 25-page report, which I'm happy to read to you. This is the bills that we filed. We filed 81 bills for the city of Prescott. 27 of them are priorities, and we were involved in some manner along the way. I'm going to go through them quickly and highlight a few of them that are of higher priority. House Bill 2011, which was the bonds levy net of cash, which is the one that says that you can only keep in your servicing account for the bonds a minimum amount of money. That was limited to just cities of over 500,000, so that ultimately didn't have an effect on us. House Bill 2027 was the PSPRS expenditure limits bill that we asked to be introduced. Mr. Coleman introduced that for us. We later determined, the rules attorney said that we did not need legislation to do what we wanted to do with regard to what I believe is now on the ballot in August and can segregate that money appropriately as a charter city. So what we did was, we went ahead and withdrew that bill. Representative Campbell and Representative Stringer have requested that the Speaker and the President appoint an ad hoc committee on PSPRS going forward. I'm actually meeting with the Chief Staff of the House tomorrow to talk about that a little bit more, and I'm sure Mr. Campbell will be filling you in on more about that as time goes on. House Bill 2064 is the jet fuel tax. That's the tax that is charged and is supposed to now go towards airport capital expenditures, and that brings it into conformance with certain FAA rules that are going to go into effect at the end of this calendar year. It was going to go into effect immediately, which might have changed some things if we do sell jet fuel at the airport, but we got the extension so that we could allow that could be worked in in the next fiscal year. House Bill 2086 and Senate Bill 1021 were the bills that dealt with prohibiting municipalities from issuing ID cards. That was more related to certain immigration-related issues. We were able to get amendments into that to limit that, so that certain cards that municipalities have to offer, such things as employee identification, library cards, transit card, municipal service bills. Is Senate Bill 1021, Mr. Coleman? Am I hearing myself?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Those things are still permissible, so that should not change anything. When I talked to Tyler earlier in the session, I think the provisions in there take care of all the cards that you currently issue, so it should have no effect retroactively. Prospectively, if we decide we want to issue something new, we'll have to take a look at that legislation. But, the good news is neither of those bills passed. So, the reason I bring it up and talk about it is because I am absolutely confident that those bills, we'll be back next session, and if we want to participate in the discussions as they're being drafted, we probably should catalog those cards and IDs and so on and so forth to make sure that we're covered on those. A couple of immigration bills, 2121, that never got out the front door. House Bill 2161, which I know we were interested in, which was the workers' comp presumption bill on cancer for public safety employees, that did pass. The governor did sign it last night. It was one of the last bills that he signed. House Bill 2176, which is the mobile home relocation for long-term RVs, which is actually, full disclosure, I also represent Scottsdale. That was a bill that was introduced by Scottsdale, that they could currently collect $7,500, as opposed to the previous $5,000 for a single mobile home, and $12,500 increase from $10,000 for a multi-section mobile home. It had been getting expensive to do some of those moving circumstances, so they went ahead and made that increase. That did pass and was signed. 2179, which was the intergovernmental agreements bill that we opposed, we were involved in that. It was, that was one of the more uncomfortable bills we had to discuss. That was a bill that would have said that counties and municipalities are not allowed to enter into IGAs unless there was an affirmative vote of majority of the members, and you would have had to have gone back and gone through all of the bills. Many cities already have that all online. There is a provision in law that says that a contract has to be approved by the council or the Board of Supervisors. It was always a question as to, why do you want to do this? Well, we want to make sure, full disclosure, transparency, and so on and so forth. We were able to defeat that bill. Not sure if we'll see that come back, but that was kind of an uncomfortable negotiation, and we were happy to prevail, but it was not a fun thing to participate in. House Bill 2213, the Jiplit reform bill. We took the position that we would like to retain the ability. Not that we have anything on the table right now, but I know there are some ideas that some folks in economic development have done. We negotiated, actually I was involved in the final negotiation with Kevin McCarthy at Tech's Research Association and Representative Leach, and we got that resolved to the satisfaction of everyone, where the first nine years would be covered by the exemption, and then the tail would be gone for anything that's coming up new. No one has used that 25-year tail, and therefore it struck us that giving it up was not a problem, because most people who would engage in that type of a Jiplit economic development activity probably would only need the initial nine-year circumstance. House Bill 2365, it was the Verizon bill. They made some changes in wireless facilities colocation. The League was very involved in negotiating out what ultimately became law. That bill did pass and was signed by the governor. I believe that that should not have a deleterious impact on us. It's more involved in certain higher concentration of population areas, but the League was satisfied with the way it worked out, and we took the lead from them. 2410 was the other presumption bill that was on heart disease. That also passed and was signed by the governor. House Bill 2419, which probably wouldn't have been the most damaging bill to municipalities, was the bill that would have originally limited occupational licensing and regulation. It would have said, you can't pass any new regulations going forward. It was very broad, very wide open, and it also said that you could not pass any new fees or change any fees. So if you currently have a fee in place and wanted to modify it up or down, it would not have been permitted, and we were successful in fighting that bill back. House Bill 2495 was the original consolidation bill. When I get to the bill that actually passed, I'll talk about that in more detail. House Bill 2499, which was the facilities, public utilities, would have kind of limited things. That did not pass. The TPT reform bill on contractors, they just can't seem to find a formula. It did not pass, no change from what was passed in 2013. We're really struggling. When I say we, all the stakeholders, contractors, cities, counties, Department of Revenue, legislators, it's tough to find a formula so that we can migrate to complete taxation at the point of sale, as opposed to some at the point of sale and a little bit on prime contracting. Finding a formula that'll hold cities harmless. You don't want to cost yourselves so much revenue in the name of consolidation of certain taxes. I suspect that Representative Gina Cobb from Kingman, who was kind of the front person for this, will probably be conducting some interim meetings. There are a lot of ideas on the table. I have a seat at that table with regard to those issues, and we'll see what happens. But that bill did not pass this year. Photoradar prohibition failed. Now we're into Senate Bills, 1021, as I said before, also didn't pass. That was the other municipal ID card bill. The PSPRS risk pool did pass. That changed some of that. I'm not as familiar with the details, but it did not effectively change anything retroactively, so where we are is where we are. That didn't have any substantive change. House Bill 1165 was the exempt wells bill that we asked Karen Phan to run for us. She introduced it, and that was our way of smoking everybody out who was opposed to it. And we talked to the cattle growers and the farmers and folks from other parts of the state where exempt well issues occur, and Representative, Senator Phan decided that what we would do is conduct an interim meeting about that to get all those groups together. At least we now know who all of the parties are statewide. One of those issues where you're trying to solve a local problem, and you realize that by passing a bill, you're creating potentially issues that could affect other parts of the state that are unintended consequences. So we will continue to participate with that. 1178 was the ASRS nonparticipating employer's liability bill. That didn't pass. 1247, the conservation easements bill. On behalf of Scottsdale, we opposed the bill because it would have had a very dramatic effect on the requirement of making annual payments in lieu of taxes. However, Senator Griffin said, well, what if we make it permissive, that they have the permission to do it if they want? And so, we backed off. Anybody wants to pay that tax in lieu of taxes on reduction of value, that's fine with us. Well, lo and behold, last night, the governor vetoed that bill. I'm not sure why. I haven't read the veto message yet, because it just came out at 5:00, and I was on the road this morning. So, I'll find that out. I'll let Tyler know. We'll pull up a copy of the veto message. House Bill 1332, which is a workers' comp bill that would allow for full and final settlement, and that was resolved by all parties. There will be an allowance now for full and final settlement of all workers' comp claims. There are certain things, if you're represented by an attorney, then there are certain things you've got to do. If you're not represented by an attorney, then the hearing officer has to make findings of fact. And the reason that that was put in was the concern that some relatively younger folks who may have an injury on the job have $50,000, $75,000, $100,000 laid on the table to them and said, this is it. You're not covered on it anymore. And they see bass fishing boat, Mustang GT, and so on and so forth, and they get all excited about it, and don't realize that, case in point, I had hip replacement surgery. My doctor told me that in 13 years to 15 years, I will likely need another hip replacement, because that's the timeframe. You need a full knee 10 to 12 years. And if you do full and final, you're not going to be covered for that second one, even though it was related to the workers' comp. So we wanted to make sure that hearing officers extracted from the claimant the idea, you understand that you will not be covered from any future health issues that were as a result of this, other than those that are stated in the full and final claim. The insurance companies, Copper Point, the workers' comp attorneys, the cities, everybody got together on this, and Frank got a good bill. It was Karen Phan's bill. She worked really, really hard on this bill and was successful. House Bill 1371, which became the hotel ownership bill. And why was this important to Prescott? Because hypothetically, if you decided you wanted to build a hotel on a Jiplit property, that means the city would have an ownership of part of that structure, meaning the land underneath it, and it might have been prohibited. So, we fought against that, and luckily, we were able to get them to pull the bill. We had really good support by pro-city legislators. Karen was supportive of us. Frankly, Noel Campbell and Representative Stringer also supported our position. Doug Coleman, I think they realized they didn't have the votes, and they pulled the bill. Senate Bill 1407, which was the directed care bill, kind of got bastardized through the process, and the final bill that came out was something that most cities looked at and said, well, we probably can't use this anyway, and that bill was withdrawn. I suspect Mrs. Phan will be back with that next year. She's going to work with the different stakeholder groups in the interim. Senate Bill 1430, which was the, ultimately became the wastewater fees on vacant land bill. That died. That went down quite a resounding 17 yes and 37 no. The budget bill, and I know this is something of tremendous interest to you. The HERF money from last year was restored again this year at the same amount. So, rather than go into the detail of how the HERF structure works and where every penny goes and so on, all I can tell you is, whatever we got last year, meaning the fiscal year that's going to end at the end of next month, we will be eligible for receipt in the next fiscal year also. That was a very, very hard-fought thing. There was a lot of rural legislators especially, who said, you cannot keep stealing the HERF funds and expect us to maintain our roads. I also represent Apache County. There are county roads there that are 27 years behind in general maintenance, and they find that it's easier to just grade them over as dirt roads than to keep them up. It's cheaper, they don't have the money to do it, and so this will at least provide some modicum of relief. I also know that you were very interested in the Governor's University infrastructure bill. Probably by about a week before the session, it became obvious that we had been successful in convincing the Governor's Office and the Legislature that using the sales tax, diverting sales tax for that was not a good idea, that it was just going to be too much widespread pain for the benefit that they would have gotten. And so, the final bill actually had $27 million general fund appropriated for 25 years. It's not $1 billion, but I think it comes up to about $790-something million, which is, you know, that extra $200 million, I realize we'll barely keep them in whiskey and cigarettes, but they're going to have to do without it. The problem with that is, it's not just that cost. There were some estimates that the thing was actually going to cost, when it was $1 billion, $2 billion. And they were quite, well, is it right? So, being the nerd that I am, I decided to build my own model and see how much it would cost, and sure enough, I came out at $1,950 million. And that's because the cost of money and other associated costs would have been there, and that means that the actual amount of money that would have been taken from the revenue sharing that goes to cities and counties would have been higher than it originally been anticipated. So, they withdrew that, they passed the bill, governor signed the bill with great flourish last night, but it'll be a straight general fund. Now, just for your information, that was something that, for which there has been precedence before. For example, the Phoenix Convention Center, when it was expanded to its current size back in 2000, that was the structure they used. They said, we will give you a matching amount, and that matching amount will be a general appropriation, and every year, we have to make sure that that general appropriation amount remains in the base budget. For those of you who don't know how they construct the budget down there, what they do is, they start with what they call the JLBC and Governor's baseline budgets. And that means, here's what we have spent before that are ongoing expenses that we feel we need to continue, and then they massage the rest of it. It is not a normal thing for them to go into circumstances in the baseline, such as the Convention Center, $20 million, or what will be this $25 or $27 million, and change that. So, there's a pretty reasonable expectation that that will be paid. And then, of course, the last bill was 1152. 1152 was the bill that ultimately was the consolidation of elections bill. When that bill first came up, 2495, I went to, Mr. Payne, we had an interesting conference call. I know that Mr. Miller was on. I think that John was on also. I know Tyler was on. It said, okay, if this bill passes, and we're in the middle of an election, and the bill goes into effect on August 9th, and early ballots have gone out, wow, the legislature could have just invalidated the entire city of Prescott election, because the ballots would have already been printed. That means that the ballots would be invalid. You couldn't print alternative ballots, because you didn't have legal authority to do. Anyway, so I went to Mr. Payne, who was a sponsor of this bill, which I found out later, he had introduced as the request of the Speaker, and I said, would you please exempt anybody who's in an election? Well, how do we do that? I said, make the effective date January 1. That way, you don't affect anybody who is in an odd-year election at the present time. He agreed to that. The original bill never passed the Senate. It was brought back as part of the budget negotiation. Mr. -- I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
What's the infatuation down there about election cycles?
There is an undercurrent that believes that when odd-year cycles run, it ought, let me reverse that. There is a feeling that even-year general election encourages higher turnout, and that, and there's the accusation, I believe unfounded, because I can show you evidence on both sides, that some political subdivisions use odd-year elections to run certain types of fiscal ballot measures, because they feel that lower turnout will benefit passing that. That was the theory behind it. When I testified on the last night of session, making sure that our amendment was there, and by the way, I have to give credit to Senator Phan, who was the one who called the leadership in the House and verified that the language that we had written was in the bill. I said, you know, the irony here is, is that you're trying to consolidate elections for transparency and more. What you're doing at Prescott is, you're doing the exact opposite, because now what you're going to say is, we can have our tax elections in the regular year, but we hold our council elections in the odd number. That doesn't make any sense. You want to talk about depressing vote count. But, I think the real reason for it is, is that they would like to consolidate all elections. That's been an ongoing theme for about the last five years. They tried to do it about three years ago, if you'll remember. The court said, it went up to the appeals court. The appeals court rendered a decision that said that no charter cities do not have to abide by that. The feeling is, is that with three new Supreme Court members, might get a different verdict, and they did it because they want it to go to court. They want to challenge that. My plain reading, and I'm not burdened by a law degree, so I just take it for what it's worth, but my plain reading of the Constitution says that charter cities do not have to abide by that when it comes to things like election or business development and so on and so forth, so. So, that's it. 25 pages of bills.
Barry, I just want to --
Ma'am, sorry.
You know, I just want to publicly thank you for putting that amendment in this bill, because it had been passed the House, on the way to the Senate. Thank goodness Karen Phan voted against it, and then we got the amendment in, and so otherwise, our election this August would have been probably illegal.
Yeah. I was convinced, following the conference call that we had, that had that bill passed, it would have invalidated the ballots that would have gone out for early voting. And when I say invalidated the ballots, that means those of you who are up for election, that election would have been damaged, and therefore, the results of it could have been declared illegal, and then we're in a constitutional mess.
And our proposition that's on the ballot.
And the proposition. Well, I mean, everything, everything could well have been thrown out the window, and that's not what they intended. When I went to visit with Mr. Payne about it, he got it. He understood. He said, no, I don't want to invalidate somebody's election in midstream. I said, then please, put an amendment in there that will delay the effective date, and he was very willing to do it. That was in 95, when it got over to the Senate, and then it died. It came back as 1152, and that's when I realized what they were doing. I called Karen, and I said, you got to make sure that that language is in there, and then they called me and showed me the language. I said, all right, that's what we wrote. That will suffice. We still oppose the bill, because we still think that as a charter city, we should be able to set our elections as we please, but at least this takes the constitutional crisis off the table.
Thank you very much.
So, there's your 27 priority bills and what the resolution was. And again, I want to thank the mayor and the council for your confidence in me, and thank Michael and Tyler for their help and support. Tyler gets calls from me at odd hours. He'll attest to that, but he's up with a new baby anyway, so he doesn't mind.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, we got a couple of questions. Blair?
Yes.
So, let me see, the last one you just discussed, is that one, did that bill, did it pass?
I'm sorry, which?
The last bill that you talked about and combined.
1152, the consolidated elections? Yeah, it did pass. But, the effective date is January 1, so it doesn't affect this year's election.
Okay, here, and I appreciate everything you do. Believe me, I do. But I have some real heartburn being a charter city, and I believe it prudent of this group up here to give direction to our city manager and our attorney to file a lawsuit against the state of Arizona. Now, some people say that's not the way to go, but doggone it, you know, every time we turn around, and I've said it here before, like a broken record, you know, I just talked to a community to the west of us and asked them how they were funding a road project, and they said, with impact infrastructure fees. Well, every community should be able to see what their needs are and be able to do it without the guidance of Big Brother in Phoenix, Arizona. When you start talking about public safety, and you look at the thousands of houses that are preliminary platified by the Dells in North Prescott, and we're being asked as a community to provide service to those residents, without us being able to charge an impact fee for public safety, is absolutely absurd. For them also to take our 2% sales tax that our voters, through our constitution, voted for, to send it to Phoenix and send it back, is also absurd. And I heard our very governor in my office at the radio station saying he hated the United States government meddling into Arizona's business. At what point in time can we get somebody's attention to allow us to operate this community based upon an election that we have by a charter, where we're a representative government, to do the right thing for this community? And we're not allowed to be able to do that, and it absolutely infuriates me to no end. And I don't see anybody in sight trying to do anything about it. How do we get somebody to listen?
Well, I could not agree with you more. Many of the bills that I articulated here today that would have taken away authority, we fought against, in concert with the League, in concert with the other cities that I represent and the counties that I represent, because they would have usurped our authority that is constitutionally granted. The three cities I represent are all charter cities, and it makes it very convenient, because I can go up, the last night of session, when I testified against this bill, even though they put the amendment on, I testified against the bill. Signed in against the bill, testified against the bill. Told them that despite the fact that they had put the amendment in, which I greatly appreciated, fact of the matter is, we still believe that this bill was unconstitutional. I believe that they want it to be challenged in court, because I believe that they want to try to get the courts to say that the charter authority does not extend to certain things. As far as filing a lawsuit is concerned, I suspect that that will be coordinated by the League, and that there will be one suit filed on behalf of either the League of Cities and Towns, or there will be a named plaintiff at all, and that will go forward, and that does need to be challenged. Remember that when the case on the previous one came up, the lower court found in our favor, the appeals court found in our favor, the Supreme Court refused to take jurisdiction over it. Therefore, the appeals court failed. Is that not correct?
That's right.
Yeah. And four of the members of the court who are still there were part of that unanimous decision on the part of the Supreme Court not to take the case. So I believe that our standing is probably pretty good right now with regard to that. To your other point about impact fees and so on and so forth, that's why we fought so hard against House Bill 2419. 2419 would have said, guys, I know you're elected by the people of the city of Prescott, and you're a city council, but we're not going to let you impose any new regulation or make any changes in any existing regulation at all. And, if you happen to have a fee for a service, we're not going to let you change that either. I mean, that was kind of an Armageddon-level battle. We beat it, and we beat it because we still And we beat it because we still have legislators. Rural legislators, regardless of how state-oriented they are, are more responsive to cities and counties than some of our urban legislators are.
And it goes back to the point of purchase. You know, I'm a contractor. And if I buy something in this community, the whole reason why I buy in the community is to help the community, not to send those monies to Phoenix. And for some arrogant individual down there to put it on there as a bill that thinks Maricopa County should supersede anything else in the state is just wrong. And I don't know when we finally get the cojones to stand up and say, what do we get to do as a charter community? Or should we just disband our charter and let the state run us and disband as a group? Because it seems to me that they just keep nibbling away at our freedom. And our freedom is that of our constitution in the city.
Councilman Blair, again, I couldn't agree with you more. And quite frankly, that's why myself and other members of the lobbyist corps who represents cities and counties fight these things every year. So far, we have been modestly successful in fighting back that stuff. The problem... I don't know how much into the weeds you want to get on the prime contracting thing. We never should have gone to the prime contracting tax in the first place, in 1990, whatever it was. But we did. And it appeared that as time went on, contractors began to realize this doesn't work. And what they tried to do four years ago was to migrate us back to point of sale. So you, as a contractor, would just pay for your supplies and equipment and so on and so forth at whatever Home Depot or Lowe's or whatever shop happens to be located up here that you're working on. The problem is, is that over time, that prime contracting tax probably took in, despite the formula, you know, that two-thirds, one-third, it's a messy formula. But despite that, it took in enough money so that it's tough... The city of Prescott, if I remember correctly, if you had gone to 100% without any modification and any migration, would have lost about $7 million to our general fund here. So you got to do something to hold us harmless, or else what you're doing is, you're making a change by the state in the tax structure that's going to have a deleterious impact on the ability of a city to be able to make its budget. And that's what we were trying to make sure didn't happen. Your point is well-taken. And that's why we have these meetings, and we have these debates, and we have these arguments. And we're trying to hold things back so that we don't get into a position where they make a lump sum change without a hold harmless clause or a migration strategy so that we can get there without it hurting too much over time. And I suspect we'll still be working on that in the coming year.
I appreciate it. I got on a roll, and I sounded like Lamerson there. It kind of made me nervous. Be my guest.
Me, too.
Well, I'd like to add one thing. I was talking to Ken Strobeck at League of Cities and Towns, and he indicated that the group that you referred to would like this to go to court, because I guess Governor Ducey has added two more people to the Supreme Court, and they think they have the votes now to be able to overturn this and have it come up, and we would lose our charter status on some things. But apparently, it's a group that believes in smaller government, and I'm not sure, you know, taking it out of our hands is not keeping it at small government level.
I learned a lot about municipal government by serving for six really long years on a planning and zoning commission, okay? Really long years. The only worst assignment I had was the two years I had on a school board. And I will tell you that the day-to-day management of municipal government and the day-to-day management of county government is very, very different from the legislature's activities. They don't have to deal with the implementation of what they pass. You do. I am not sure that the Supreme Court has changed enough to overturn what was the case. As I said, the Supreme Court unanimously decided not to take that case. Four of those court members are still there. One new one, Clint Bolick, who I happen to know very, very well personally, is not somebody who likes to tinker with the Constitution like that. He's a strict constitutionalist. And therefore, he will hold the city's charter status, try to hold it inviolate. The two new ones, no history with them, and you just don't know. And remember, Supreme Court justices are appointed for life, and therefore, they can exercise judgment without having to worry about being fired, essentially, other than in, you know, the judicial review. But yes, that's exactly why they wanted this bill to pass. They weren't aiming it at Prescott. They weren't aiming it at Phoenix. They were aiming it at, we want to overturn this because we want to make the decision. And that's exactly what Councilman Blair is saying. And so we continue to fight the good fight.
Also, Ken, thanks that Tucson is going to go ahead and probably challenge.
My recollection was, they were the ones that challenged it.
Yeah, Tucson took the lead, and then Winslow and Prescott sort of joined in last time.
Right, okay. That was my recollection, yeah. Yeah. And then if I remember correctly, there were a number of amicus filings by other municipalities who had similar off-year election cycles.
That's right, yeah. So I think it's going to gear up the same way this time.
And I wouldn't be surprised, and again, without going too much into the weeds, if they don't actually file a cert with the Supreme Court just to get the thing taken care of, not have to go through a trial process all over again.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Well, Barry, I wanted to thank you, too. Two years ago, I think it was two years ago when we hired you, I was a little skeptical about hiring a lobbyist who may have conflicts of interest and represent so many different people. But you have shown that you are a person of high integrity. Having you down there in Phoenix, talking to legislators, talking to the League, all the people that need to be communicated with, has meant so much for us. Thank you very much for working on our behalf.
Well, thank you. The comment about integrity is the best compliment that I can receive, so thank you very much.
Mayor Boettner?
Thank you, Mayor. Heckling, some of my fellow council... Appreciate you being down there, Barry.
Thank you.
As you're well aware, freedom is very important to the people of Prescott. You know, this is first territorial capital pointed by... designated by Abraham Lincoln. It's very important to us that private property rights not be trounced upon. And, you know, we're a municipal corporation. We have a board of directors, a chairman of the board, and a CEO. In fact, the matter is, the city of Prescott has property that we're allowed to do what we need to, and it's called public right-of-way. On the other hand, when it's private property, that's exactly what it means. It means private. That doesn't necessarily mean we should be out there trouncing on everybody's private property, whether it's with the grace of the state or the federal government. What it means is that we need to respect private property rights. So I just wanted to share that with you. And I'm glad you're down there.
Thank you, and I appreciate your comment. That was the argument on 1371, ownership of a hotel. I mean, if you look at the Constitution, this municipal corporation may engage any business that anybody else can't. And that was done intentionally. If you read the background notes from the 1910 Constitutional Convention, that's what they wanted it to do, was that a city could operate a business if they saw necessary. Why? Because they saw that there was a necessity in certain circumstances, especially with things that the private sector at the time might not have been able to provide. And remember, it was a populist era, that the city would be able to do that. And they granted charters for that purpose. And we still have a number of cities, very large cities, that are still under that charter. So I appreciate the comment very much.
Now, I also want to thank you for all you've done down there. And I think I would add, not only do you talk to the people down there, but you keep us informed. And I know many times when we have issues, we can call you up and say, make sure you get our two representatives in the center and let them know this is what we think or how we feel about a particular issue. One thing I was a little concerned about is on the exempt wells. So I know it didn't go anywhere this year. Is that going to be brought up next year?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, the sponsor, Karen Fan, who introduced it at our request, and she said, you know, this is going to be controversial. And I said, okay. And by the way, I talked with the head of... Well, the lobbyist for the Department of Water Resources, Doug Dunham, and he was sympathetic to the problem. And he was willing to help us write some language in that bill that would have taken care of the problem that we have without necessarily have impacting other constituents who still, in certain areas, need the authority to have those exempt wells. So we have the Department of Water Resources kind of working with us. Senator Fan promised me when she said, look, let's withdraw the bill. We're not going to get it passed this year. And Senator Griffin, who was the chairman of the committee, who had some heartburn about it because the cattle growers had some concerns about it, that she would conduct some stakeholder meetings over the interim. People say, oh, over the summer. No, they don't meet during the summer, trust me on that. But they'll be probably getting together sometime in the fall. It's not an election year, so it'll provide them with more time to do this. And I fully expect Senator Fan will be able to help come up with a resolution, and we will reintroduce the bill next year.
Okay. The other one was patient brokering that was submitted by Noel Campbell.
Yes.
And I guess it went to the chairman of the committee, and he decided not to even bring it up to the committee for discussion. Would it be better next year to possibly push this through the Senate rather than the House?
Yeah, I spent many hours with Representative Campbell strategizing of how we could do it. And what we decided was, rather than to try to go around a committee chairman, which could have some long-term implications, and Noel wants to have a good relationship with Representative Farnsworth, that the better thing to do would be for next year for us to try to get... I had another bill this year that had to do with a criminal justice issue for another client. And we were able to get Mr. Farnsworth to agree to work on some language that he crafted that accomplished the same thing, and ultimately, the bill passed. I think we might be able to accomplish the same thing. We now know where the barrier is, and therefore, we can approach the barrier. I don't want to go around it. I'd rather confront it head-on. And I've been in touch with Mr. Campbell regularly on this bill, and he and I will continue to work on it. And I think we'll probably be able to get that reintroduced and moved next year.
Okay, thank you. Also, city manager, I think on the PSPRS amortization bill, we got to make a decision at some point, I guess in the next couple of weeks, whether or not we're going to remain with 20-year amortization or move to 30-year.
That's correct. If we want to be part of it this year, we have to make a determination by the end of June.
Right. Fiscal year responsibility, yeah.
And so is that going to be a year-by-year thing, or once you decide on 20 or 30-year, you're stuck with that?
I think a procedure is in law now, is it not? I think now it's the city's determination. I don't think there's...
A one-and-done. I think you have the opportunity...
Right. So if the...
Daniel.
Sorry. My understanding is, the council does not elect it for the next upcoming year, and we can, of course, talk about this tomorrow at our budget workshops. But we could elect it the following year if we need to do that. It's not just, you have to make a decision by the end of June. That's only if you want the rates effective for next budget year to be at the lower... or at the longer amortization rate or the lower rate.
So we can make a... Each year, we can decide on whether or not we want to be 20, 30, or...
I'm not sure if it's each year, but we can make a determination in the future if we want to switch between 20 to 30.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Barry. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. And again, invite me up during the summer anytime you want.
Okay? We might do that. Any public comment on the legislative agenda? Okay, we'll go to item B.
3B, presentation of the Joint Utilities Fire Department Hydrant Servicing Plan.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Myself and Henry Hash are looking to share with you some of our retrospective efforts that we've undertaken over the past, really, couple decades, ever since ISO existed, which probably, for many of us, including some of us at the diocesan here, may not have even been born yet when ISO was created. So we're going to take a retrospective look as to what we do and the successes that we've had, and then look prospectively at some of the things that we might... that we're moving forward to in the next fiscal year to kind of change a little bit of the model. And with that, I'd like to go ahead and introduce Craig, who I think you know from the utilities department, and Dawn to kind of move forward with your presentation.
Can you tell us what ISO is for people that are listening?
Insurance service organization. They rate us in what's called the fire protection rating protection class, as far as your fire services. It's a three-tiered system, which involves communications, water supply, and fire department staffing. It arrives at an ISO rating, which currently, we're an ISO 4, and was validated, I believe it was about four or five years ago, three years before my arrival, so probably closer to six. So we're an ISO 4 today.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Craig Dotset, utilities manager. So collaborative fire hydrant maintenance between Public Works and Fire Department. The two departments have been working together on fire hydrant maintenance for years, and today, we're just going to forward, spell out a few of the items that are regularly done on the fire hydrants and different types of maintenance activities. Here on the screen, we have the different maintenance activities that are done regularly, and a little bit in those, like the operational checks and flushing, that is the one that has the most impact or that on the system gives us the most information. That's checks the general operation of the hydrant. Operations seat, STEM, identifies any issues with that, performs flow test on the hydrant, as well as flushing the water distribution system. So that item right there is where we do the true flow testing to prove what the hydrant's capability is as far as flow from the distribution system. Repairs, kind of self-explanatory, that's just repairs on mechanical items that's identified through the operational checks. Replacement is full replacement of the hydrants. We have been replacing hydrants that are as old as in the 90-year-old range in the system. Painting is general maintenance, cleaning of the hydrants, painting to keep them looking good for the community, as well as for the public, just in the neighborhoods. Visual inspections, then, identifies any operational issues. So the visual inspections is less involved than the operational checks. So that's something, in order to get hands-on to all of the hydrants in the system, doing operational checks on every single hydrant every year can be labor-intensive and taxing towards other maintenance items that we have to do. So the visual inspections can bring into place operational checks, as far as checking the caps, the chains, that tracer wire is available, any obstructions, or... And then it checks the general operation of the hydrant, but it does not perform flow testing or flushing of the distribution system. And then lastly on that list is the accessibility inspections. Accessibility inspections is similar to the visual, but does not put any hands-on to the hydrant. And with landscaping, we end up with a lot of issues and/or challenges finding the hydrants and/or using them when they're needed, simply through vegetation, landscaping, rock being brought up too high on the hydrants. There's places where you drive around the streets, and you come down the street, and you'll never know the hydrant was there because it's beautifully tucked into the bushes. So in 2016, there was 1,554 operational checks, and the operational checks includes the visual and accessibility inspections in that one. So there was 1,554 of those completed, 91 repairs, 41 complete replacements, and 96 hydrants were painted.
Yeah, go ahead. I have an odd question, because it was presented to me. Why are our fire hydrants yellow and other municipalities are red or silver?
That was a decision many, many years ago. Well, even the hydrants that we replaced that are 90 years old are yellow. In our standard details, if you see a red fire hydrant, that indicates that it's a private hydrant and is privately maintained within another facility.
Okay. I do. Okay? Move it, man.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. What we've looked at doing is, we do not have the ability within the Fire Department to do the maintenance on the actual hydrant itself, the replacement of the hydrant. What we do have the ability to do, and what is very important to us, is to be able to find the hydrants when we need them. While we do have them, both in a printed map book, and we do have them available electronically, being able to access them rapidly is always a concern for us. So one of the things that we can do in the Fire Department is get out there, look at the hydrants, make sure that the chains are on there, make sure the caps are on there, make sure that we can see them, make sure there's a three-foot clearance all the way around them, so that at the point that we need to use the hydrant, our wrenches can work, we can open the caps, and we can open the hydrant. So that's where we feel as though, without committing to needing to buy back hose and the like in order to replace them, we can... around them, so that at the point that we need to use the hydrant, our wrenches can work, we can open the caps, and we can open the hydrant. So, that's where we feel as though, without committing to needing to buy back hose and the like in order to replace them, we can still go out there and do this part of the program in order to assure that when the hydrants are needed, they're accessible, and they are working at the minimum level by way of the caps will open and close, the stem turns, and we can get to them and see them.
Let's go back. The chief also mentioned ISO and gave the name for that acronym. ISO, when they were in town a couple of years ago, normally, they would come in and they would want to do many, many flow tests in order to identify what the hydrant capabilities are. They went out with us, and we did a number of spot flow tests. And then we took and checked all of those real flows to what comes out of our water model. So, our water model has the entire water system in it. We can take and pick any point in the system, run the model, and it will give us an output. After those checks were done with the ISO, we went into the model, ran each of those locations, and compared what the model gives for an output versus what we got for wet water in, in the field. And they were all so accurate and so close that ISO has accepted our model in general for information and backup for the ISO from the entire water system. And lastly, future opportunities that we've been talking about.
One of the things that we've looked at that other communities have adopted is an adopt-a-hydren program. The majority of adopt-a-hydren programs that exist in the United States today deal with places that get a lot of snow. And the people that have the hydrant on their property will take responsibility for clearing the hydrant from snow in case it's needed during a fire event. But we have found some adaptations to that, where people can know what the rules are. Because one of the problems that we have, and you'll see some pictures here, is when we go into an area where people don't know the rules, and they've got a beautiful juniper, and there's a hydrant in the middle of it, and we require three feet of clearance. So, it sort of gets us into a confrontational problem with homeowners if we have to cut back their landscaping. So, the adopt-a-hydren program first and foremost would be an informational program, letting people know that we need the clearance around the hydrant, we need to be able to see it. So, on the front end, they're not surprised when we tell them that they have to clear back away from their hydrant. But on the second, we've also seen some programs where people have the ability to perhaps paint their hydrant so that it matches their decor in their homes. There are some complications that come up with that because the hydrants do need to be visible. Luckily, we have very few red hydrants. Yellow's sort of our standard, as Craig said before. But the ability for people to sort of take ownership of their hydrants and keep them pretty, and make sure that the caps are on tight, and make sure that they don't landscape around it with the recognition that the work that they do, it becomes their hydrant, also benefits the city, is one thing that we're looking at right now and trying to figure out, how we can introduce this to the public for a win-win situation.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Dawn and Craig, you know, when we have transformers on private property or service, electrical services, it's required that there's a housekeeping pad and, and distance. Why don't we put a, just pour a pad around, around those hydrants to where nothing can grow, or...
In our standard details, we have the requirement for a clear zone around them. It's the matter of us policing that and having the public communication then in order to make everyone aware of, of that requirement and the need for, so that they are available when they're needed.
And Councilmen, they are mechanical devices, and on occasion, they do fail. And every place that we pour the concrete would be extra concrete we'd have to take up if we needed to work on the hydrant.
With that, that stuff...
I got a question.
That's the end of that?
If I may. Two questions. Number one, Dawn, are those, tops of those fire hydrants, are they locked? They seem like they have a cap on them that has a locking structure on them.
Councilman Blair and council, there are some that are locked, and the reason that they are locked is, we have found that there are some areas in town where people will attempt to access the water system, to get water out of our system when they shouldn't. So, there are private ones that are locked, and we maintain keys for that along with Central Arizona Fire and Medical. But the majority of our hydrants in the city, the vast majority, do not have locks on them.
Okay. And the other question I have, using as an example, like Yucospa Estates, that has a homeowners' association, how do you deal with those folks to make sure those hydrants that are in some pretty remote areas, but they have city water and city fire protection? How do you get the message across to them?
Well, one of the things that we're going to do is, we're going to get the message out to everyone. We've discussed the best way to do that. We're going to use Mr. Heine, and we're also probably going to use mailers that go with the water bills, so that people understand the program. There are some private water mains, but we have to make sure that we can still have access to them if they're required for fire protection. So, whether or not they're in an HOA, or they're on a standard stated streets, the same rules apply, and we'll be trying to get that message out to everyone while we're going out there and actually physically performing the work and letting them see what needs to be done.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a few questions. How many fire hydrants do we have in the city limits of Prescott?
About 3,473.
Okay, so I saw that you only did about 1,500, so that's that in one year, and then you do the other 1,500 the next year?
That's correct. And, and that 1,554 was the, the full inspection testing checks, as well as flow testing and distribution system flushing. So, that was the total gamut, and we did almost 50% of them.
So, basically, in two years, you do them all?
Correct.
Okay. So, the operational checks and flushing, who does that?
That has primarily been water operations. Being that it includes the distribution system flushing, we have to systematically do that in the distribution system, so be, the, the water operation guys understand how the system works, where the water's coming from, where it's going to, and we have to be sure as we're doing that flushing, that we flush in line so that we don't stir something up and make a mess somewhere else, make a problem. Because there is fine sediment in, in the lines over the years that we do flush out when we're doing that process. So, we have to make sure that we follow through and completely remove that from the system once we have, you know, stirred it up.
So, who does the repairs?
Water operations.
Who does replacement?
Water operations.
Who does painting?
That has been water operations.
Who does visual inspections?
That's what we're working on right now, sir, is, when we identify, when we would go through town and we would identify hydrants with problems, then we would commit, or we would call the Water Department, it was a grading issue or something like that. But part of this program will sort of put some of the visual inspections. And there's actually a second-level flush. There's the flushing of the main system. But when we get to each hydrant to make sure that it operates, we will clean the dirty water out of that hydrant to make sure that the valve works. So, there's a small flush and a major flush. We'll be involved in the small flushes, and we'll be involved in the visual inspection and the landscape maintenance around the hydrants.
And who does accessibility inspections?
That would go along with the visual inspection, make sure that the hydrant is operable, make sure that we've cleaned just a small amount of water out of the hydrant to make sure that it's cleaned out, and then making sure that it operates clearly and it's accessible for the three-foot radius around it.
Well, I just want to say that I've been in a number of cities around the United States, or anywhere from, living in Alaska to being in Florida, and I've always seen the Fire Department responsible for checking, maintaining all of the, the fire hydrants. I'm just kind of curious why that's not being done here by the Fire Department.
Well, sir, I could address that a little bit. First off, there's an issue of capacity for doing that. Most communities of any significant size nowadays, very few are using line personnel for that, for a couple of reasons. One is, when you're out there and getting all grimy and flowing fire hydrants, and then you're dispatched to an emergency medical services call, it just makes for really poor public relations. Secondary to that is, the systems are very complex, and the owners of the systems, the utility companies, have really kind of distanced themselves from having fire service members go out and flow test fire hydrants and do pressure checks. Not that it doesn't happen some places else, but a lot of the major municipalities, specifically those that own their own water system, that's becoming less and less of an occurrence.
Mayor Brodeur?
Thank you, Mayor. I realize that providing public safety in the city of Prescott ultimately is a team, team effort. And I kind of liken it to flying an airplane, you know? The mechanics make sure that the airplane works, et cetera. The stewardesses make sure everybody's taken care of and stuff like that. I mean, you got people that load the cargo and all that stuff. But ultimately, there's one pilot, and that pilot is ultimately responsible, make sure that equipment is right. That when he goes out and he checks that airplane, he goes out and he checks that equipment, he goes out and make sure before he puts his butt in that airplane, it's going to fly. And I liken the service of public safety, we have a police department and a fire department. And ultimately, while you guys do a great job, you're part of the team, ultimately, responsibility falls back on the Fire Department to make sure that this community is fire-safe. Just sharing that thought process.
Councilman Dizell?
Thank you, Mayor. Sounds like you guys are on the right track. You're using it. I, I, you know, police officers drive their police cars. I don't expect them to repair the police car, but they do get in it, and they know if it operates all right. Sounds like you got the accessibility, you use them, you wrench them. I wouldn't expect the Fire Department to be a plumber, so, just me.
I never said I expect the Fire Department to be a plumber. I do expect the Fire Department to make sure the equipment they're going to use works.
Sure.
Well, since you brought up the idea of a pilot, I know, as far as I'm concerned, I'm going to make sure my aircraft is operational before I go fly it. And it just seems to me that the Fire Department would, would want to make sure that any fire hydrant they're going to, first of all, is accessible, they know where it is, and it's going to be operational. So, to me, I can definitely say that's the Fire Department operation and, and responsibility. Thank you. Is there any questions or comments from the public?
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. My name is Sandra Smith, 701 White Spar. Just a couple of questions for you. You were talking about having individuals adopt a fire hydrant and saying that they could paint it. Do you have restrictions on how?
Again, as I stated earlier, this is at the inception. We know that we want to be able to see them, so we probably don't want them painting them black, but we really haven't come up with a system yet that allows them to paint them...
Wasn't black I was thinking of.
Well, but someone may prefer that so that it's out of sight, out of mind. So, coming up with some sort of a paint scheme where they're still visible to us, and then the homeowners can feel like they've taken some ownership and it's part of their decor for their property, that's what we're going to be working on. And we're probably going to do that through questionnaires.
Yeah, I was thinking about some of the old hippies painting them psychedelic.
They'd be visible.
They'd be visible. And I was also wondering about, when you're talking about accessibility and, and you're finding hydrants in the middle of a juniper, I can understand that's a problem. Who do you report, like, I go around town in this or scooter, where I'm right out there, okay? I see a lot of things that maybe people driving by don't. So, who do you report to when there is something that's amiss, like the bush growing up around them or, or whatever?
Currently, you could call either Water or Fire to work on it. But as we come out with this, there will be a call-in number, a central point of contact for if you recognize a problem with a hydrant of any kind, where you can make one phone call, so you don't have to choose departments, and then we'll filter that to which department it should go to in order to get it fixed.
Well, I was wondering if it was maybe the code enforcement number, that, the standard code enforcement number would be used, the 1-800 number?
Probably not, because that would just put another layer in the bureaucracy. It would either be the Water Department or the Fire Department that would deal with it. So, we would try to figure out the way to make it the fastest to get to that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the public? Okay, thank you. We're going to adjourn this meeting and reform downstairs for an executive meeting. We'll be, we'll be back here, here at 3 o'clock for the voting meeting. Meeting adjourned.